My fellow listeners, welcome to the door. Uh, I want to start with the indication of the pledge. Mr. Featherson, would you, uh, mind please to cover the indication?
Father Henry, we thank you for this day, we thank for this beautiful weather, for the chance we have to come together today to deal with business in the college. Guide us in that, help us to make the right decisions with your wisdom on us, bless us in everything we do, and give me the praise. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on our list is the approval of the agenda. Any discussion? Dr. Richardson, approved, is there a second?
I'll second.
Dr. Hayer, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Uh, consideration approval of Vanessa's October board meeting, is there any discussion?
And we'll also move to approve minutes.
The motion by Dr. Richardson to approve, is there a second?
I'll second.
By Mr. Featherson, all in favor, is there aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Let's move on to the consideration of the college financial report. Ms. Uvain, are you there?
I'm not yet. Okay. It's on page eight of your board books. This is as of September the 30th, uh, the current fiscal year compared to the same time last fiscal year. Uh, you can see that our tuition and fees continues to, to pull ahead of our past performance, so that's excellent. Uh, great trend to see. Uh, other areas then, uh, on the next page looking at expenses, uh, very similar slightly had compared to last year. Uh, and then on page 10, looking at revenue minus expenses, you can see that we're just very nearly done even, uh, in net, uh, revenue minus expenses of what we were this time last year. So, uh, it appears, you know, we had a little bit of a bump in enrollment last year and that appears to be holding for this year's class. Excellent. Uh, following that, the next couple of pages are just those same numbers, uh, just laid out differently. And then on page 13, we look at our October preliminary numbers, uh, comparing budget to actuals, um, the top half, looking at our revenue. You can see our tuition fees is nearly at seventy percent, so that's, this will have just a little bit of spring enrollment, spring enrollment opened in October. So we'll have just a little bit of that included, but, um, so that's a great place to be at this point in the fiscal year. Uh, then looking at the bottom half of the page of our expenses, uh, looking at, we have, uh, this is about a third of the fiscal year, and thirty-three percent. You can see that most of those categories are well within that, uh, scholarships are going to run a little ahead because those are more fifty-fifty, uh, between fall and spring terms, so that's, uh, an expensive difference there. The next two pages, uh, are the, those same, those same figures, uh, just laid out differently, and then the capital budget on page 15. Uh, you can see that we're still working on our HPA-C improvements, uh, it's the largest portion of the campus improvements. And then the group work that we've, uh, been working on with the ARC and the Westover building. Following that, then looking at our cash from banks, uh, turning over to page 18, at the high graph, you can see this is as of the beginning of November. So this is a, a little bit heavier cap, cash, heavier point in the fiscal year, uh, where we've been able to capture, uh, fall aid. And, uh, are beginning to register those spring students, so we'll see that continue. Then on page 19, you can see that that's, we actually have, uh, eliminating all of our certificates of deposits. And on the following page, you see a list of those, um, that we've transferred, so what you'll see, this, this month is somewhat in a transition period where we have, the endowment CDs have been, have been liquidated. And then they're in transition to move into the new, uh, community, community foundation, the Ozarks account. So that's where you see them reflected in the following, so this is just sort of a transition month. Following that, then, uh, the bid report on page 22, we don't have anything to report there, no sealed bids this month. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Uvain. I'd like to mostly accept the financial report as presented. Mr. Featherson makes a motion, is there a second? I'll second. Dr. Hayer, uh, once again, a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose, same sign, motion carries. Moving on to the presence report, Dr. Payne.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, it has been a fairly busy month, and I'll start talking about the, uh, Ruth Gart art exhibit which is now finished. Uh, this was a well-attended event, we had a cocktail reception with the artist that was on October 24th. Uh, very interesting, um, art exhibit along with a lot of very positive community comments. Uh, and it coincided with quite a few events in the town, so it really pushed a lot of notice, uh, to the art exhibit. And now I'm going to ask Mr. McDaniel to come up and talk about our food clinic that we did.
We partnered with Key Drugs again, um, this October on the night of the 20th, for employees who stopped by in the morning, usually early in the morning. Um, we had about twenty-seven participants on campus those two days, and then off-campus, usually next arrangements with local policies or providers, they're, we have about seven participants talking.
So this is part of our wellness campaign, we partnered with, as Mr. McDaniel said, Key Drugs. And our insurance company, who, and the insurance company covers this for all of our employees. So food shops are provided at no cost to the employees or anybody that misses the dinner. This is our fourth year, fourth or fifth year to do this, it's been fairly successful, so, thank you, Ms. McDaniel. And now I'm going to ask Professor, oops, um, outboard there. So I'm going to ask Dr. Rudy Bulstead to come forward, uh, she is the Provost of Central Methodist University. And she is going to talk about our partnerships that we have had. Central Methodist has been a long-time partner with Three Rivers, and we've done a lot of great work, so Dr. Bulstead, welcome, and, uh, turn me over to you.
Thank you. On behalf of Central Methodist University, thank you so much for our longstanding partnership that has benefited many students, many folks who are employed here at the institution as well, and continuing their education. And of course, then its impact on the econ- economy and the community at large. Some of the programs that we've offered in the past have been the RNTB-SN degree completion program, psychology, mathematics, special ed, accounting, biology, child development. And there are a lot more opportunities as well online. I just have to say that the university center has been a major asset for our institution. The staff and support there is absolutely phenomenal, they help us with rigorously students in TRC classes. They help us with working with the TRC advisors and our advisors. They help our students to graduate seamlessly, they verify our enrollments for consortium agreements, they organize the open houses and transfer fairs, and just do so much for their university partners, so thank you for that support. Given this strong partnership, we also have entered into the world of athletics, which we share a, uh, we each have a rodeo team, and we share the space for the rodeo team, and so that's been exciting. I wish we were doing a little better this year, but, um, there's hope for next year. And then, you know, given that partnership, and given the fact that our missions are so aligned, as far as meeting the needs of the community and empowering our students to succeed academically. That we have now started to look at a prison education program together at Southeast Correction Center. Um, the way which we're pursuing this is that the Three Rivers College would offer the first two years, uh, and Central Methodist University will offer the last two years. And we are looking primarily at the Associate of Arts and Business Pathway. And then for Central Methodist, we need a Bachelor of Science in Business major. Um, programming for the Associate of Arts will be completed online, each, uh, individual in corrections has a tablet that they can use, and the curriculum will be developed that way. Whereas the Associate of Applied Science in Manufacturing Technology and its Core Order Certificate will be offered through a combination of simulation, face-to-face instruction, and online through the tablets. Health funding is eligible for these individuals through the prison education program, and we are working to try to complete that application process now.
So to give a little history about prison education programs, uh, between twenty and thirty years ago, uh, prisoners lost eligibility for, for pill. Prior to that, prison education programs were very, very common, uh, and actually had quite a bit of success as far as reducing recidivism, uh, within the population. Changing behaviors within the incarcerated population, uh, and they took a lot of different forms and formats. So the first prison education program that I was involved in, in my time in higher education, uh, the, uh, most trusted prison population was actually released. And came on campus and was integrated into the population of students, took their classes and then returned to the prison. Uh, over a course of time, this became somewhat problematic in a few different locations, so they altered the prison programs and tried to send faculty to the prisons. Uh, it was a little different tone and tenor of how things worked, it took a, um, particular mindset for the instructor to be successful in the population, you had to understand the population. Uh, but in general, they were extremely motivated and highly articulate students. For example, it was not unusual that you would show up to teach the course on the first day to find that your entire class had read the entire book. Uh, the supplemental material that you had provided for them, and was more than ready to ask you some very in-depth questions. And actually began applying the material. Uh, part of this was, it was the main activity that they could participate in, so they had plenty of time to do it. But to make the program successful, you had to understand how the prison operated. So prisons operate in their own world. Um, as you can imagine, prisoners are not allowed free movement within the facility, they move on a very particular schedule. And activities that prisoners can be involved in are closely timed to their movement schedule. So you had to understand that movement schedule to be able to schedule classes effectively. Because when you did not, you learned the hard way that the prisoners were going to move at the movement time. And if there was an activity that they preferred to class, the entire class was going to move at movement time whether class was over or not. Uh, in talking with the Department of Corrections, and then with local staff at Southeast Correctional Center. We have begun the process of learning their environment and figuring out all of the peculiarities that we are going to have to deal with. So the Southeast Correctional Assist Center is a Level Five prison in Missouri, which means it is the most, the highest level, uh, so the maximum security prison that Missouri has in their classification. It also serves as a multi-level prison. One of the challenges of the current prison education program is when the student transfers from prison to prison. And I'll let Dr. Bulstead talk a little bit about the impact of transfers.
Sure, um, so Central Methodist University has had a prison education program since the fall of '22. And we learned very quickly that for those, um, residents or incarcerated individuals who are within a couple of years of release, they often are sent for treatment. So they'll be transferred to a different facility. So in order to be able to continue their program of study, you have to also have not only the approvals there at that new location, but you also have to be able to provide them the curriculum at that location. The benefit of being in a Level Five facility is that those individuals are often there for a longer period of time. So you will not have near as much issue with transferring or release, um, from prison, because the average number are there ten years or more. Uh, and so they'll have a period of time in which they'll be able to complete their courses and programs of study without ever transferring. Um, and so we have found, um, that if there's an opportunity to have, uh, an op- right, operation at a facility that's a Level Five, you will find it is much easier related to transfer.
We have also found that the staff at Southeast Correctional Institution, because they have not had any opportunity to participate in an education program prior to this, have been very easy to work with. Uh, they are a very innovative facility, the facility is actually in very good shape. Uh, they have very adequate space that they are going to provide us, uh, to do this, so the AA program, the Associate of Arts program that will transfer into Central Methodist's business program, uh, will be done completely virtually. The industrial maintenance program will be done as a hybrid, and the prison is allowing us to create a lab on-site where the students can do the hands-on work. So they will do the bookwork virtually, and then we will actually have an instructor that goes into the facility and operates. Uh, our intention is to begin with a cohort of twenty-four students in, uh, two sets, so we can take groups of twelve at a time through the lab. And we want to begin with the students who are less than five years to release. So for this program, the intention is to open marketable skills so that when they do reach their release date, they are viable to get a job. We have already talked with our industry partners, they are very open to employing these individuals, they are excited about the opportunity to have a, uh, new group enter the workforce. That, uh, has valuable skills that they need in the manufacturing process. So it's a lot of partnerships that are coming together to provide this. Uh, the prison is very excited, Department of Corrections has been, uh, relatively easy to work with to this point. Another challenge that we will face is technology within the prison. So one of the challenges is, within the realm of technology, is the prisoners are not allowed access to anything external. So everything has to be cleared, everything has to be done through the modified learning management system, uh, that the prison provides through a third-party provider named Securis, which holds the national contract for prison technology. They are getting better, but they have not been the most responsive to technological difficulties. There is no one at the prison who has the capacity to apply technological aid, so when the technology does not work well, you have to be flexible enough to work with the student. So that they can continue. So what you end up with is a lot of stopping and starting within a course, that is a particular challenge for our operation. We are a, an attendance-taking institution as designated by the Department of Education, meaning, meaning that we take daily attendance, and there's rules around this that impact your eligibility for financial aid. So students have to be actively participating in the course going on. So we have to figure out as much as we can before we begin the program. How we're going to deal with students that have technological problems and will have difficulty then in communicating and keeping with us, because the... The last thing we want to do is end up with a student that is overly frustrated, and that creates a barrier to them completing and being successful. But that is going to require we're fully prepared to make all of the appropriate modifications to our processes and procedures within the rulebook of the Department of Ed and the Higher Learning Commission. To maintain our full standing and accreditation in the stellar capacity that it currently is. Uh, so this will end up being a very challenging program. Having said that, we have not found anything that's not doable. All of the challenges that we have seen or identified, we are already in the process of identifying solutions. So this requires a four-step approval process. So there is quite a bit of bureaucracy that we have to step through to get full approval. So the first step is we had to be approved by the Missouri Department of Higher Ed to be allowed to do a prison education program. We have applied for that, been approved. Then we had to apply to the Department of Corrections, they had to review it and approve us to operate within the prison, we have accomplished that. The next step, which we are in the process of, is completing an application to our accrediting body, the Higher Learning Commission, seeking approval to enter into the prison education program. This is a very thorough, lengthy process. Uh, we are finishing up our application, we will submit that, and there is an unknown amount of time that will be required for it to be reviewed by a peer panel at the Higher Learning Commission. And then, if successful, we'll receive approval from them. That then triggers the next two events. We will have to then make application to the United States Department of Education. It is a similar process to the process to apply for approval from the Higher Learning Commission. However, there is an added layer of bureaucracy within the US Department of Education, uh, above and beyond what is involved with the Higher Learning Commission. As of yet, they just released their application process. And they will not speak to the question of, what is your SWM timeline for approval? Uh, this is not unusual, the United States Department of Education has never been overly forthcoming with information about how long it takes them to do anything. I will tell you that in our experience as an institution, it takes much longer than anyone thinks it should. That is simply the way the United States Department of Education works. Once we get approval from them, we can then begin offering coursework. And once you start offering coursework, within twelve to eighteen months, you must host the accrediting body for an onsite visit to verify that everything you told them you were going to do. Is actually being done in the way you said you were going to do it. So if you take from that and go back to something that you're filling out as a proposal to the accrediting body, fully more than likely two years prior. You have two years between when they're going to come and review to verify that what you said you were going to do is what you were doing. During that two years, you are guaranteed to find things that alter the plan. Which then triggers an intermediary review process where you have to notify the Higher Learning Commission, yes, we said we were going to do this, we have now learned this and we are doing this thing, is that okay? Please be aware, before you get here, this is changed. This sounds extremely complicated and burdensome and somewhat draconian in nature. However, it's really not as bad as it sounds, it's fairly standard practice process and procedure. We have a high level of competency when it comes to dealing with our accrediting body and the United States Department of Education. There is nothing fearful about this, it is nothing but work and effort, and this institution is very good at this. One of the big values of partnering with Central Methodist University and Dr. Bulstead. Is that they have done this for the last couple of years, so we have an advantage over the majority of institutions that are making the application. In that we have a partner who's already gone, okay, here are the forty-seven things that are problematic that we need to make sure that we're doing it this way. These are the modifications that have to be made, this is the way we need to operate. So unlike other colleges who are either not partnering or partnering with people that do not have the experience Dr. Bulstead does. They're operating more in a dark room than we are. So the partnership has a great amount of value to us in moving forward and figuring out all of the things that need to be done. Uh, one of the other major issues that you deal with is incarcerated individuals who are in the program who then, um, behave in ways that are unacceptable to the Department of Corrections. And end up in administrative segregation. They cannot continue to participate when they're administratively segregated. The issue becomes a conversation between the educational provider and the facility, how long will they be in administrative segregation? So if you're in a sixteen-week class, you have to find that out, if that is known information. And make a determination, can this student successfully complete the class after they have been released from administrative segregation, and then make exceptions to the rules so that they're not lost. Or you have to make the decision, this student should be withdrawn from this course. So the way the US Department of Education titled for federal financial aid rules were, is a student must make a bona fide effort, and that is a defined term. To have completed sixty percent of a course. So once they have completed more than sixty percent of a course, the United States Department of Education makes the determination that they have earned their financial aid. If they have not, then the United States Department of Education states, they have not earned that financial aid and it must be returned to us. This is no different than any other student who is financially pressured. The issue with that is, we then have to return the money to the federal government after we have taken up a slot and provided the service. That is simply the nature of the beast, there's plenty of data on how frequently this happens, we have processes and procedures that track this, this is a known entity to us. So while it is an issue, it is a normal issue and thing that happens on a regular basis within our non-incarcerated student population. That is where a lot of our policies, processes, and procedures are focused, to ensure that our students persist in their classes and have a successful completion. Going back to, we are an attendance-taking institution, one of the things that we found before we declared ourselves an attendance-taking institution is students... is students that attended all the way to the end of a course have an eighty percent chance of successfully completing that course. So if anyone asks you whether attendance matters, it does. As a general rule, a student who does not attend a class does not pass. While that is not a hundred percent rule, it is generally true. So we are well-prepared to do this, it is a complex process, we are well on our way. Uh, and in fact, Central Methodist will offer the first two courses in the programs in January. Uh, we are beginning with State National Government and English Composition. Both of those will be online courses. On the Three Rivers College side, we will use the process of offering those two courses as fundamentally a training program and dry run for all of our processes. So while in the end Central Methodist is doing the instruction, doing the financial aid, all of the enrollment process, the orientation process, we will be doing institutionally as part of the partnership and that will allow us to refine and revise our procedures and processes before it's really us doing it, making us even more prepared. Anything you'd like to add to that?
I think you covered it well, Dr. Payne.
Uh, I do want to go back and mention the partnership we have in rodeo because that is, uh, very unique to our two colleges. We are two out of three institutions in the state of Missouri that have a rodeo team. So there's Three Rivers College, there's Central Methodist University, and there's Missouri Valley are the three that have rodeo. In looking at the population of students we had participating in rodeo, in looking at the partnerships, uh, that Central Methodist and Three Rivers College have, um, and with the growth in our agricultural program, there was a gap in opportunity for our students that participated in ag and in rodeo to have a place to continue. So I actually reached out to Dr. Gullstead one day and I said, I have an idea and I want to see what you think about it. She goes, well, I'm open to ideas, what are you thinking? I went, Central Methodist needs to have a rodeo team. And her response was, that's fairly crazy, so how would that work? And I went, I think I can make this, uh, really work well. She goes, we don't even have a rodeo facility, what are you, you know, how are we going to do a rodeo team? I said, aha, we have a rodeo facility. We have everything you need, so you can start a rodeo team and base it here. That will then give our students a natural next step to continue both in rodeo and I want you to add an ag program that our students can go into in addition to all of your other programs so that we have created a pathway for these students. So we talked about that for a couple of days and Dr. Gullstead came to the conclusion, yeah, this could possibly work. And I said, oh, by the way, I think, you know, uh, there's some coaches available that may be, um, willing to work with you. It took about six weeks from initial conversation to, okay, Central Methodist University has a rodeo team, we'll begin this, uh, coming fall, we've acquired a coach and we've started recruiting. In the world of higher ed, that scenario that I just laid out for you is why Central Methodist University is a unicorn. There is not another institution that I could have caught and six weeks later had a partnership and a workable program started. I can tell you that any institution other than Central Methodist that we would have talked to, we would have been lucky if the second phone call had occurred within six weeks. That's why the partnership that we have with Central Methodist University is unique and works so well and brings so much value to our community. So Dr. Gullstead, thank you for all of the work we've done together. Any questions?
For the students who continue the ag program at CMU, how much of that will be online and how much of it will be on campus?
So right now it can be either in seat or online, they have a choice.
Okay, as far as the prison program, I assume the restrictions are placed on them for access to computers. They can't just log on and do a distance learning class like our students here can.
Right, no, so, um, Dr. Payne mentioned they have the tablets and each individual was provided one by the Department of Corrections. They call them JK tablets because that's Securis' brand. And then what happens is on their tablet, we will load the learning management system, which is called Lantern, and they will load something called Movie Office, which is basically a freeware version of like, um, Microsoft Word, Excel, et cetera. They'll get both of those when they're, they sign up and they register. And then that is their only access, it is monitored through the Securis system, so the Department of Corrections, they do work analysis, they do tracking and everything. So it's always secure and safe. They never have access to any internet at all, other than, there's no connections, no links within the courses. Everything must be embedded within that course.
Will those lessons be on a schedule sooner than classes here or can they fast-track those since they should have been?
Like, no, they're on like a typical semester basis.
How many other schools are applying to Central Methodist, to which facility, to do this? Are we the only ones?
This is, this is it.
Okay, so would that lead to the possibility of us, if this program works well for us, going to other, uh, prisons with the same type, hey, we can do this for your Level Five prison here as well? Or is there, I don't know, I'm not a person of the prison system, whether or not. Uh, I don't know how many Level Fives there are in the, in the state.
There is the potential that we could be asked, uh, if other community colleges around the state choose not to enter into a particular facility to do a prison education program, we potentially would have the opportunity to operate in those facilities.
As far as the technical programs, what kind of programs are we looking at there?
The technical program that we're currently looking at, starting with, I believe is Dr. Payne's manufacturing technology?
Yes. So manufacturing technology is the program where you are taught to do the repair and maintenance on all of the highly complex manufacturing systems, whether it be line production, robotics, uh, programmable logic controllers, PLCs, uh, and those sorts of things.
And they are open to any other program as well.
Right, this is where we started. It is, um, a very valuable, uh, skill. We have all of the equipment that we need to do it. We have a highly competent faculty member in the area who, um, thinks this is a very good idea. In the end, this program is good for Three Rivers College, it's good for Central Methodist University, it is good for the Department of Corrections, and most importantly, it has the potential to be life-changing for the participants.
Which goes back to our mission.
Which goes back to our mission of building our community and making better futures for the people that we deal with. If you really think about the work that we do, we provide education, that's the surface-level thing that we do. But in essence, the students that come to us have a dream of a better and different future. And they are in fact trusting us to help them achieve that. So once you realize that, you realize the seriousness and the impact and the importance of the work that we do. And I can proudly say that to the last individual involved at Three Rivers College, they understand that, they take it seriously, and they treat our students as if they are their own. I cannot begin to tell you the number of times on a consistent and continuous basis I have seen the faculty and staff at this institution go to extreme measures to make sure that our students are taken care of and have the opportunity to succeed. It is by far, I've looked at five other institutions. I've consulted at well over twenty other institutions and I have never seen a group of individuals as dedicated and as compassionately committed to the students as the people that we have at Three Rivers. That is the core of what we are and why we are not just your everyday college. Other questions for Dr. Gullstead? Thank you, Dr. Gullstead.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now I'm going to ask Dr. Mary, that you can come up with our Student Success Academy team and talk about our participation in the Higher Learning Commission's Student Success Academy.
Thank you, Dr. Payne, good afternoon. As you know, Three Rivers College is accredited by the Higher Learning Commission and is designated as an open pathway institution. So as an open pathway institution, we require one major improvement effort within a ten-year accreditation cycle known as a quality initiative. So, uh, the quality initiative takes place between years by nine in that ten-year cycle and so that period of time falls for us now. Uh, so we have had an opportunity, the Higher Learning Commission recently offered, uh, open pathway institutions in good standing, like we are, to this unique opportunity to participate in the Student Success Academy uh, so that we can develop that quality initiative project, um, with the aid of their expert, um, mentors, scholars, uh, facilitators, uh, at the academy. So we applied and were accepted. So, uh, this would be a three-year project. Year one starts now in the investigation stage where we're looking at key data elements and factors that promote student success. Year two with planning stage where our team will identify opportunities for improvement, uh, you know, that would lead to student, improve student success. And then year three is the implementation stage. We were able to, um, select up to five members of the institution to be on this team. And I'm going to introduce, uh, the members to you now. Uh, first is Dr. Ryan Bigsby, Director of Online Learning. Um, Ms. Kelly Hastings, you can stand if you would like, please. Um, Ms. Kelly Hastings, Life Science Instructor, CASI NOX Coordinator of Testing Services, I believe she's actually doing testing somewhere right now. Uh, Randy Brooks is Director of Involvement Services and Student Development. Um, Heather Cornman, Assistant Professor of, uh, Early Childhood Education, and she is at a conference. Uh, Mr. Frank Loveley, Director of Academic Assessment. Ashley Vernon, Accreditation Coordinator, and she is also my executive assistant. And Mr. Jason Cowan, Assistant Professor of English, and he has also agreed to be the spokesperson for the T Today. He's going to tell you a little bit about their academy experience they all went to on October the, um, twenty-third, so.
Definitely everybody, um, it's always a great experience to go and talk to people from other institutions, see how they do things. We miss the interest in people from larger schools, schools that are kind of farther away. Some people that have worked college, they have a very different environment than what we have. And, uh, like Dr. Payne said, we're in the first year of three-year process. It's going to begin with us looking at a whole lot of data. And the very first thing that they helped us do was assemble a lot of data before we left and then begin working our way through all that stuff, which student groups are successful and which ones aren't. And so we came back with basically two objectives to, uh, pursue when it comes to, uh, working with that data. Uh, the first one is we went with a team of eight and as we looked at this stuff about student success, we realized that our team of eight has a limited perspective. And the first thing we're going to do is basically double that number by bringing in some people who have a perspective and expertise that was kind of not present in our group, so people from disability services, coaches, things along that line. And the idea is we're going to get these people to help us. We got a lot of data and you can separate all of our students into all kinds of different data points and different demographics and things like that. But we're a small institution. And so the first thing we have to remember is that every one of those data points equals a person. But at our institution, each one of those data points, one person might be four or five of those data points. And so the first thing we're going to get those people to help us do is figure out where we've got overlaps in those groups. And the idea is going to be to identify the largest number of students that we can have the most direct impact and they're the greater need. So if we can help one group, that's going to bring up a bunch of other groups because the individual students in that one demographic or in that one group are probably representing four or five other ones as we take a look at things. So as we go through the first couple of months of it, it's going to be bringing in those four or five other people and then we're scheduled to present our first ideas to the faculty in January. Um, are there any questions? Did I cover everything I was supposed to cover from everybody?
Any questions?
Thank you. The next step in the project is the team of eight will, will provide the leadership for other subgroups that will be really kind of formed as task groups throughout the institution. So we will have that cross-functional collaboration, looking at operations at the college and how potentially could it impact either in a positive way or negative way on student success.
Thank you, Dr. Payne. Question? Thank you. And now I'm going to ask Professor White to go forward and talk about the fall showcase.
Thank you. My buddy White, this is Cindy White, she'll be passing out our programs from the fall showcase that our Communications Department, uh, helps us with every year and also with posters, uh, so we're always grateful for that. Our showcase was held on Tuesday, October twenty-fourth, seven in the Lieutenant and Bon Arts Center. We featured a ten solo and two music theater ensemble performances. And, uh, our students are, uh, taught by myself and Cindy, uh, Sherry Mitchell and Dan Kupas.
Sherry Mitchell's an add-on too, makes all of our costumes, beautiful costumes. Um, students helped with all the stage props and then assisted backstage during the program as well as performing on the stage.
We hung and adjusted a stage lights program and ran the light board. I'll paint a vivid word picture of, instead of me taking over your monitors, which I think would not be advisable, with photos we took of a particular light, a cyclorama curtain that we shine LED lights on and are capable of producing sixty-eight billion with a B, uh, colors. So we'll find something in a song or in a name in a performance, uh, Mexican sunset, uh, the color of someone's eyes, uh, anything we want to do. And, uh, you just touch our, uh, monitor on the light board and bam, it's there. You can save it and then program to the Y button and boom, it's, it's there. So, uh, it's, uh, I could go on and on about that, but I will not. Uh, I painted my picture. We set up twenty wireless headset microphones for performers being ran the soundboard.
And in conclusion, we have a couple of performances coming up soon. And it's serendipitous that Dr. Willstedt is here because this Saturday, the Central Methodist University Choir will be in town at the First United Methodist Church, seven p.m. And we are their opening act. So, the Three Rivers Choir will also be joining with them for a few numbers at the beginning and at the end, a mass choir piece. And we also have a partnership with them. I've invited all of our past Bachelor of Music education graduates from Central Methodist to come and participate in the, in the mass choir. And a few of them have been able to accept that. Others are out there teaching and have to go to a hall district band. So, we'll have some folks there. And then on Tuesday, back here on campus at the Tendenon Center, seven o'clock, we will have our fall, what do we call it, concert?
Well, you will all.
With our choir, our concert band, and our jazz band, all of the five.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
And now I'm gonna ask Dr. Mariah Lyne Anderson to come up and speak about the Trunker Tree that was done on our cover show.
All right, before I talk about the Trunker Tree itself, I need to tell you a little bit about the background. About seven years ago, Dr. Payne asked a number of us who were in charge of various organizations on campus to form a Student Leadership Academy, which we did. It's been in operation now for seven years. And part of the Student Leadership Academy is that they organize and a project and that they carry out the project. A few years ago, we just, when they decided to do a Trunker Tree, we decided that this was an excellent project and that we should continue it and make it the only project each year. And it has grown year by year to such an extent that last Easter, we introduced an Easter Trunker Tree, which was, uh, very slow, but I expect it will take off eventually once people have the idea. So, this is part of the Leadership Academy and they hold to this project. It gives them the opportunity to work as a team, to make proposals, to solve problems, it gives them responsibility. For example, one of our group designer, which I brought one in with me today to hand out with they, she designed an awesome flyer, which with the help of the Communication Department was distributed. The students also posted the event on Facebook, which actually brings in probably more people than anything else. The event was to be held on the twenty-eighth of October. Normally, we hold it in the parking lot, the Tendenon Center parking lot. But the twenty-eighth of October, the weather forecast was pretty bad. And it turned out it was a pretty miserable evening. So, luckily with the help of Tara down in the Athletics and Chuck Stratton over here, who is, by the way, indispensable. Has helped us immensely, I must say. Thank you, Chuck. With their help, we moved it into the Best Center Gym. The maintenance put out tables for us. And we had a total of, I think, fifteen tables. We purchased, with the help of the college and the Five K to Kappa, the President's budget gave us two hundred and fifty dollars. Five K to Kappa gave us another two hundred and fifty dollars. I went down one day to Walmart and bought five hundred dollars worth of candy. People were concerned that I wouldn't have a sugar overload when they saw my heart. I can tell one lady actually that I kind of really liked candy. But anyway, we, as I said, we had fifteen groups. The students were encouraged to decorate their tables and to dress up. In addition to our groups, we also had other participants from the college, such as the DMS program, Five K to Kappa joined us as well. Oh, the Spanish Club did a really nice table. I had some, on our poster, if outside folks wanted to join us, I gave them my email address because it was easier just to contact me. We don't allow individuals to partake, participate because, well, you just don't know who they might be. Can't do a background check on them, you know, there are weird people out there. But organizations, fine. So, for example, this year, we had T-Mobile joined us and two of the smaller churches in town, the Bluff Church and Cobblestone Church as well. I talked to them afterwards and they were all extremely delighted and said they would definitely come back again in the future. The night was very successful despite the rain. Apparently, they, I've heard that only the hospital and Three Rivers held their event that night. Other events were, other Trunker Trees were canceled, even indoor ones because of the weather. I gave out, one thing I did was I personally gave out a small little toy or a trinket to each student, like a little pull-up car or one of those pocket bracelets. I had at least five hundred that I had counted. I know I had more than five hundred. I had some spare Christmas bears that actually I ended up using. So, I know that we had at least minimum of five hundred kids there. My, I don't know the exact number, somewhere between five and six hundred kids. It was amazing. We practically ran out of candy. I was able to gather up the bits and pieces of candy and put them into a grocery sack, which I delivered to Haven House the following Monday because I was afraid if I didn't deliver it to them quickly, I'd probably end up eating them. So, anyway, it was, it was a really good, good event. It is good for our students. As I said, they learn to problem solve. They make some pretty, some pretty crazy suggestions, but they work their way through those and it gives them a chance to organize responsibility. It gives them a chance to give something to the community, which I think is another important part of this. I think this is good for our students, as I've already said. I think it's good for the college because it brings people on campus. Parents and relatives come and they appreciate it. It's good for the community. It's good for the kids. I mean, if, that night, I, they could've gone to the hospital, but we were there too. So, it was extra special because they had someplace else to come and they really seemed to enjoy themselves. So, that's our Trunker Tree, which we hope to continue. I hope we will continue with this institution for a long, long time, way after my age, when I, when I finally do retire.
Fifteen or so years. From fifteen or so years.
I have been retired, by the way, for the past seven years. But some people seem to think that I'm going to be coming in on a walk, using a walker on this campus, but he is mistaken.
Is that a bomb?
It makes, it makes like a bedridden and still huddling in here. It's wrong.
Will, we've already made arrangements with Mr. Stratton to push the hospital bed. And, yeah. We have certified ADA pathways. It will be perfectly timed.
Just keep the ideas your stuff.
Any questions for Dr. Ryan Anderson? Thank you very much. Now, the Nursing Job Fair in Steyxville. We completed this. This was our second Nursing Job Fair. The first one was here. The second one was in Steyxville for this one. Highly successful, highly attended. Had a lot of community healthcare providers participate in this and had a number of successful interactions between our students and members of the community and our healthcare providers. Now, I'm gonna ask Ms. Randy Brooks if she'll come up and speak about the Counselors' Conference.
All right. Good afternoon. On November third, we had the privilege, we say it's a privilege because I love having visitors on campus. But we had the privilege of hosting our annual Counselors' Conference. We had about thirty-six rooted regular counselors and A-plus coordinators from the area that came in. And we are always able to get lots of updates, anything about new coverings that we have on campus. This year, of course, because we're still right in the thick of running Project Drive, we were able to get some pretty nice updates on that particular program. There's a lot of excitement about Surge Tech. We want to let you know that. They were really excited about hearing that that program is coming here with us. They were also able to get an update from our state A-plus Deputy Director. So, you know, there's a handful of changes with A-plus. So, I always enjoy having some state entities that are here and available to answer questions or, you know, address any concerns or anything like that that we have on campus. We'll also be hosting this set of counselors again in January with the Southeast Missouri School Counselors Association. So, that'll actually be the fourth time that we'll be hosting them on our campus just in this year. So, we're super excited about that. Any chance we can have for them to be on campus, tour, find out more about us, get a little bit more comfortable with us. We're pretty happy about it. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Then on November ninth, we held our annual Kennedy trivia night. This was another successful event. We had a packed house and raised twenty-five hundred dollars for gap scholarships that will be applied to students in Kennedy. And then finally, on November fourteenth, we held our Red Cross Blood Drive in the Best Conference Room. This is a recurring event that we have held on campus. It's always very well attended and very successful. Moving on to some upcoming events. On November thirteenth through the fifteenth, the Roseanne Stannard Art Exhibit will be here. And on December fourth, we will host a cocktail reception with the artist at six-thirty in the Tendenon Center Lobby. Our next in a series of mental health events will be on November eighth, Survivor of Suicide Loss. This will be held in the Wexner Hall in the Robert W. Plaster Free Enterprise Center from twelve to two-thirty. Then on November twenty-first, we will have the second Fall Conference in the Tendenon Titan Arts Center that the whites spoke of. Then November twenty-second to twenty-fourth, we will officially be on Thanksgiving break. And then on December fourth, our next Patents of the Arts show, Return of Christmas Carol. Seven p.m. in the Tendenon Titan Arts Center, December fourth. All tickets, fifteen dollars. They're on sale. So, get your tickets because this one will be spanning room only. Then on December fifteenth, we will have our annual Employee Christmas Breakfast, where we come together and celebrate the season with some time together as we wind down the fall semester and get ready for winter break. That's open to all employees, full and part-time adjuncts, and all retirees are invited. So, then Nurse Penning will be that afternoon, December fifteenth from two to four. This will mark our next set of nurse graduates. Then we will go on winter break. We will be closed starting December twenty-first through January eighth. Then we will return on January eighth for spring convocation, where we will kick off the second half of the academic year. Then January fifteenth, we will be closed for Martin Luther King Day. And we will host Stay Alive, which will be the first spring show for the Patents of the Arts. January fifteenth, seven p.m., Tendenon Titan Arts Center, fifteen dollars. This is sponsored by Dillon Harvard Architecture. A Christmas Carol is sponsored by Kissinger and Kirkman Investment Center. Tickets, again, fifteen dollars. Pre-sales for this show are already hot. So, if you haven't got your tickets, get them quickly. Tribute show for the Bee Gees. It's gonna be an amazing event. Then first day of classes for the spring semester, January sixteenth. First Responder's Night in the Largo Family Sports Complex will be January seventeenth. This is an annual event where we honor our first responders in the area. And this is put on and hosted by our first responder, EMT, Harry Medic Program. And that is the President's report. And we do have executive session items, Mr. Chair.
I will entertain a motion then from the floor for us to do the executive session.
I'll make the motion.
Dr. Hager makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Featherson, this is a roll call vote, Mr. Featherson.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Featherson?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson? No, Trustee Hager?
Yes.
Trustee Erickson? Trustee Shaw?
Sure, why not? Session, uh... Right, all right. Items for consideration, discussion, and vote. Number one, audit resolution. Ms. Ewing.
Okay. We do have the FY twenty-three Annual Audit and Financial Statements for review. We have a clean opinion on both the financial statements, the federal programs, and the internal control. So, there's three opinions there, all of them unqualified and good opinions that I put forward for your adoption. Do you have any questions about them?
Sitting in the auditor said it was a very boring, clean, and perfect audit. He said, in his business, boring is good. And if you've ever dealt with a government auditor, boring is standard. So... Is there a motion to approve the audit?
Any concerns about the audit for you?
No, it went very smoothly. It was, it was a good, boring audit.
As a member of the audit team, I feel like it's my duty to make a motion to accept the audit.
Dr. Hager, as he prefers to be called, has made the motion to accept the audit as presented.
I'll second Tim's motion.
Mr. Featherson, a second. All affairs, now. That's a roll call, excuse me.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Featherson?
Yes.
Trustee Hager?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Absolutely. Moving on to prison education.
We have the opportunity to create, enter into prison education programs. I'm asking the Board for authority to enter into an initial program at the Southeast Correctional Center and other programs around the state as they become available and is aligned with our mission and to set an appropriate prison education tuition at each government.
Since I got my doctorate in Reed Slough, which also has the same program, I actually want to make that motion.
Dr. Hager makes that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Featherson, this will be, once again, a roll call vote.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Featherson?
Yes.
Trustee Hager?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Sure. Let's move on to policies.
Yeah, so, our first policy for consideration is IP sixty-three-ten classroom attendance. And there have been some changes in federal regulation twenty thirty-four CFR six hundred point two. So, we have made the alterations to the policy to bring this in line with that and bring this update to current operational procedures. We ask that you approve the policy.
Is there a motion to approve the policies as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Featherson, is there a second? Second. Mr. Williams, there's another roll call vote, please.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Featherson?
Yes.
Trustee Hager?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Once again, yes. And number four, resolution for the Delta?
No, we've, we've got distance.
Oh, this is one we loaded?
In consideration of approval of changes to IP sixty-five-ten distance learning, we also had to align this policy with the same federal regulations.
I probably gotta vote for a motion at once. Is there a motion to approve IP sixty-five-ten distance learning?
I'll make that motion.
Dr. Hager makes the motion. Second.
I'll second.
Mr. Williams, all of us, a roll call, please.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Featherson?
Yes.
Trustee Hager?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yeah. Now, can we please talk about the resolution for the Delta Regional Authority Grant?
Yes, so, we received a Delta Regional Authority Grant that will be focused on doing renovations to add some programming, technical programming to the Dexter location. The grant calls for two hundred and sixty thousand dollars worth of match, which we are capable of doing. To accept the award, we have to pass the resolution that is included in your board book. So, I would ask that someone move to approve in second and that you approve the resolution.
I'll move to approve the motion, make the motion to approve this.
Mr. Featherson makes a motion to approve the resolution entering into agreement with the Delta Regional Authority Grant.
I'll second the motion.
So, then by Dr. Hager.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Featherson?
Yes.
Trustee Hager?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes. And next, we'll move to consideration and discussion and vote on the resolution calling for the trustees elections for sub-districts one A and two. One A would be Butler County and two would be Carter County essentially. 1A would be Butler County and 2 would be Carter County essentially.
Due to the expression of Tim Hager's position and are you with me? And Amber Richardson, so I make a motion that we move forward with an election for the board trustees and that we appoint the recording secretary to formally oversee the, let's see, to serve as the election authority based on the resolution that's included in the board book today.
I'll make the second motion.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
There it is. Motion by Mr. Pedersen, second by Mr. Williams to have an election.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Pedersen?
Yes.
Trustee Hager?
Yep.
Trustee Shaw?
Sure.
And looks like we are now down to consideration and approval of personnel, actions, and all associated documentation.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Williams makes a motion to approve all personnel actions and associated documents included in your board book. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Dr. Hager.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Pedersen?
Yes.
Trustee Hager?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes. The only thing left on my agenda is to adjourn.
I'll second that.
I'll make the motion.
I'll make the motion to adjourn. Mr. Williams seconds. Is there a I vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Let's go home.